I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, June 13, 2018 at 7:05 PM. Just one announcement, the -- I've got a letter from the Board of Selecting that Mr. Fitzpatrick was appointed a full member. Congratulations.
Yay.
Yay.
I don't get a watch or nothing.
This could be your last day.
When you be tired.
The first public hearing tonight is case number 2018-06. It's the continued public hearing for Andrew and Ruth Parker, 42 Shore Road. Representative Ms. Lee?
Yes, I am.
Okay. What was yours?
You've got a new face on the block.
How about that? Never seen anything before.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Board members. My name is Henry Lane, and I'm here on behalf of the Parkers this evening. As you indicated, this is a continuation of a meeting that started some months ago. It has a fairly unusual circumstance, and I had an opportunity to do a little research over the last week or so, and I'd like to share that with you if I could. Let's find a view. I think that's fine.
You want this?
Well, let's see original. That should eventually end up in the file. If I can direct your attention to the third page, you'll see the little section of the assessor's map that I've included. And the property of the Parkers owners shown is Lot 49 and 50, sort of in the middle of the plan there. And when I was doing the research, I was trying to determine whether or not there might be some grandfathering rights here. And research, at least the preliminary research that I've done, indicates that Lot 49 ironically was a grandfathered lot. You'll see that it has 82 feet of frontage, so it meets the requirement for 50 feet of frontage. It has 7100 square -- actually, it's more like 7200 square feet of area, so it has more than 5,000, that's ordinarily required. And the second criteria, of course, is we have to establish that it was not held in common ownership. And on the fourth page of that, and you'll see that I prepared a chart, and you'll see that the table shows in the middle column parcel Lot 49, and you'll see that it was owned by Wallem Lake Terrace, which was the company that subdivided all of Wallem Lake Terrace, obviously. And Wallem Lake Terrace owned it until 1956, when they sold it to Sarah Boss. And Sarah Boss owned it until she died, and her heirs owned it until the Parkers bought it in 1993. So it was created, what, 14 years before Douglas had zoning, so it was obviously a legal lot. When it was created, it met all the criteria until 1970. In 1970, it was held -- it was not held in common with any abutting property. The land to the north was then owned by Gladys Dyer, and owned by her family until Commonwealth purchased it in 1990 and incorporated into the state forest. The other parcel that touches it on two sides was owned by Wallem Lake Terrace until 1985, when the Parkers bought it. So it was never held -- well, between 1956 and 1993, it was not held in common ownership, so it does qualify as a grandfathered lot with 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet of area. The irony, of course, here is that the Parkers own a whole lot more land and much larger parcel, which, because of its dimensions, is not grandfathered, because it only has 42 feet of frontage, although it has 37,000 square feet of area. So we have the irony of having a small grandfathered lot and a much larger lot that technically isn't grandfathered, which have now merged into one big lot, which doesn't read zoning either. But since the small parcel was grandfathered and is buildable, because in our research at least, it indicates that you do not lose your grandfathering by merging additional land into it, you would lose it if you combined it and tried to separate it. But if you combine it and don't separate it, I don't think you lose your grandfathering, so technically that little lot's still grandfathered. The practical problem, of course, is that it's too small to physically build a house, a septic system, and a well. So if you look at the plans that were originally submitted, the house is going to be on the larger parcel, the septic system is going to be on the grandfathered piece, and the well's going to be in the back. So from my point of view, what we'd like the Board to do is recognize that the smaller lot is grandfathered, that we've added additional land to the grandfathered lot, and that you grant us a variance to allow us to build a house on the larger lot, but combining both lots with the understanding, of course, that we can't separate the lots in the future, that they have to remain combined. And as I say, although it's kind of an interesting situation, I think it works. And I think we make the other criteria as well, because obviously, this is by far the largest lot in the Wallem Lake Terrace subdivision. It's four times as big as most lots and eight times as big as many of them, just on 5,000 square feet. So I think you can, you know, you can at least comfortably say that this is certainly consistent and probably is not going to create a hazard or difficulty or cramping or density problems, because it is, you know, over an acre of land, actually, in a subdivision that has tiny lots, basically. So I think we can thread that needle and establish that this is a unique situation, where we have a grandfathered lot, where we've added land to it to make it feasible, but that because of the way the lots are reined, we can't technically meet the requirements of zoning, but we can develop it in a way that's fair and equitable and meets the criteria. So I've had an opportunity to talk to Attorney Tolerant about it. I think he may want a few more questions answered, but I think he agrees that there is a window here that will allow the town to do what we think it ought to be doing.
Jay?
Yeah, I actually think that, Henry, if I could see the assessor's plan that shows the two lots? Yeah. I actually think that the window is not through variance. I think they may just have more common grandfathering. There is, as I mentioned to Henry, I think there's a little bit more research on the other side. So there's no -- the two lots have merged, so there's no separating them. They are now one lot. They're in common ownership. They're both -- they both have zoning nonconformities, so you can't treat them separately anymore. So the question would be whether or not, as together, they enjoy some grandfathering status, or whether apart, they may be worthy of a variance. Variances are tough. The standard is near impossible. I think the preferable thing for the applicant would be to try and squeeze this into a grandfathering status. So as I understand it, this was the originally owned lot, 50, the larger one, and they've recently purchased this one. If this was always held in separate ownership, as Henry has suggested, number 49, then someone can pop a house on it right now, provided that they could do all the septic and all the other good things. So that's fine. When they bought it, it then became merged with this other lot. Now, there's a line of case law that is not really that well advanced, but I'm aware of it, and we've used it. And when you have a nonconforming lot and you add other vacant land to it to make it better, then you're not deemed to have kind of killed your grandfathering, but to enhance it. If you take some away, that's a problem, but if you're adding to it, the courts have said, "Well, you're making a bad situation better, so we're not going to penalize you on your grandfathering." So here is the originally held lot, and on its own, obviously, it had a big problem. Not only was it insufficient, it was below 50 feet, so they really needed that. The question, I think that, I think, and I'm going to suggest that the applicant ask for continuance, that I have in my mind, isn't so much that they can't use the two lots combined, it's that when zoning made this lot, number 50, nonconforming, was it held in common ownership with 51, 81, 82, 108, or 109? If it was, then we have to consider whether or not it may have already by law lost its rights, and that might create some problems for 49. Maybe not. I'd have to look at a little bit of the case law. You know, having spoken with Henry, and I thought it was in reverse, the order of purchase of the lots was reversed, makes a little bit of a difference. So I think one of the things that, and I'm happy, as you know, I've worked with Henry on a lot of cases, is to kind of take a fresh look at it and see if maybe they don't need a variance at all, because no one wants to be subject to that requirement, because it's a really difficult requirement to meet. Obviously, that's up to the applicant, what they want to do, but I think with a little more research as to the time zoning changed, as to whether or not 50 had some common ownership with these, if it didn't at all, then they're free and clear, and I would recommend to Larry that a building permit could issue. If they did, then Henry and I have to consider some, a couple other legal concepts, but it seems to me that that's a better avenue for the Parkers, so you're not put in the situation of having to try and fit this into a variance standard, which is a really hard standard, obviously. So that's been my suggestion. I'm perfectly happy to work with Henry as he sifts through the title of those other few lots and try and come up with something that I could, where I could give a good set of advice to Larry and to this board, and maybe they could just withdraw the application or suspend it pending, you know, renewed building permit application. So I kind of, I know it's a lot for the Parkers, poor Parkers, to digest, and I'm glad that they hired Henry, obviously knows what he's doing, so that we could have this conversation here tonight.
Do any Board members have any questions for counsel? I assume you're going to ask for continuance?
Well, I prefer not to, but I don't think I have a lot of choice at this point.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, John.
In regards to this map, of course.
Yeah.
So looking now, you're at the two lots. We talked about this about a year and a half ago. I remember the case quite well. And I looked it up. I see it appear to question, but the new house that is going on, I haven't got the plans on it and all that.
I don't think we spoke about this a year and a half ago.
Was it a year ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. Oh, it was maybe the fall?
Their original application date.
Okay, it doesn't really matter the time.
I just was hoping you weren't talking about somebody else.
No, I remember this quite well.
Three months ago was the first time we've applied for a notice.
I'm sorry?
Three months ago was the first.
You know what? Please do not speak unless you recognize.
I'm sorry.
So my question was, now, does it make all the -- new house make, do all the setbacks on the, now? I don't have a set of plans.
No, so if they enjoy grandfathering, then they get all the rights of what we would call the single lot exemption, which means that even the setbacks are not really an issue. Obviously, we would want them to conform as best they can with the setbacks.
Well, I'm looking at them, and I'm thinking to myself, this, you know, almost 400 feet here, and it's 124 here, and they could.
I'm assuming that they could make a complying structure there, which would make things a lot easier.
But if they have a set of plans.
But that's not where we're -- we're just not at that point here.
There is a plan. The house will be, the house is going right here.
Yeah.
There's a septic system here, and a well in the back.
I mean, right now, they own, for, even though there's two deeds, they own one lot, because by operation of laws, become now one lot.
Yeah, I remember that.
So the question is, is can we get them to a point where it's just a simple building permit application from Larry versus having to do, you know, really thread a needle on a variance application? And, you know, I know that you guys have experience with variances, and it's an almost impossible standard to me, obviously.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, two things. John's question. They did submit a plan in there within the building envelope, showing the setbacks.
That's great.
Question for you, it was brought up before. Is there really a time limit on grandfathering? Does it expire?
No, no. The single lot, well, there are some. The common lot exemption, and that's why I need him to chase the title down here, because that's a five --
It was just brought up, so I just wanted to make clarity.
That's a five-year. If they get the benefit of the single lot exemption, because it's now become one single lot, that's forever.
Yep.
So this one, if they had some common ownership here, that it's something that we have to still, I still think there's a pathway for them, but it's something that I think we have to look at a couple of cases. So.
Thanks.
Would you?
I'm very comfortable that our attorney, our land judge's attorney, is looking at this with Mr. Wayne and for us, because it's been giving me headaches.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to continue?
Continue.
Case number 2018-06.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to continue case number 2018-06, seconded by Mr. Holland. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
That would be July 11.
It continues to July 11?
At 7:00 PM.
That should be plenty of time for Henry and I to sift through this.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. The next case is case number 2018-09, a public hearing for Louis Tacino, 103 Shore Drive. The date of the application is May 17, 2018. It was advertised in a Telegram Gazette and posted here in the town hall, and it reads as follows. "The town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:15. For Louis Tacino, is requesting a variance in a rural agricultural RA zone district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 4.1.3, dimensional setback requirements for the front and side yard setbacks. Existing building has a front setback of 22.9 feet and a side yard setback of 13.4 and 8.2. The applicant is seeking a variance for 27.1 feet for the front yard and 11.6 and 16.8 feet for the side yard setbacks to allow a single-family dwelling to remain on property located at 103 Shore Drive, map 300, parcel 18." Voting on tonight's case will be at Mr. Bumbauer, Mr. Holland, myself, Mrs. Holmes, and Mr. Fitzpatrick. Maria, did we get the certified mail of that?
Yes.
Okay. And we had a correspondence from the planning board, says that they have no objection to the attached request. Sign Mike Greco.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I request a continuance to it for the date.
All right, turn to our next meeting.
Yes.
All right. Make a motion to, in fact.
Do we continue the public hearing until the next, uh, zoning Board of Appeals meeting on July 11?
Okay. Excuse me. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Holland to continue the public hearing, 2018-08, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, to our July 11 meeting at?
7:15.
7:15.
Mr. Chairman, it's 09.
Oh, did I say 08?
Yes.
Thank you. Case number 2018-09.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? This meeting in July.
Thank you.
See, Mike, you have to sit in front of you.
I was hoping, so you might be in the water on this one, too.
Oh, really? Yep.
Roslin Road. It's good exercise for you.
I tell you, five weeks ago.
The next case was advertised for 7:30. We can't start it earlier than it was advertised, so why don't we do some minutes? We have the March minutes, March 14.
All right, we'll talk.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I guess so.
Thanks, Jim.
The kids play with it, that's why it speaks. Yeah, Henry, see? Mr. Chairman, on page two, top.
Which?
I only did one.
March 14.
March 14. It says they purchased two 50 by 50 lot, side by side, to make one large lot 100 by 100, and that is not possible. It would be 50 by 100, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
I missed print, I see.
50 by 100.
Unless you're using Common Core math.
Sweet catch.
It just popped into my head, and I forgot. I didn't see that. I didn't see it in my mind's eye. Of that, I'll accept the minutes of March 14, 2018, as corrected.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes of March 14 as amended, and a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Holland. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Actually, we have time to stack another case.
Page two on the top, Maria. It says, it's one large lot, and it says 100 by 100, it has to be 50 by 100. Turn and move on to this next one.
Why don't we, we can start that case now, so maybe we'll do that.
Was that whole, that whole statement wrong, then?
Yep.
And the rest of that paragraph?
Did you continue reading?
Continue reading, because then you kind of do, if you put in a 30 by 80, a 50 by 100, at least 10 feet all the way around. That says you got 27 and 22 feet. 44 and 22 feet.
Yeah, correct.
It's impossible.
That's true. That is true. So we question the whole paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to correct it?
Let's extend it, and we'll go over, we'll go over prior to next month's meeting.
Yep. Withdraw my motion. I'll withdraw my motion to approve.
Okay. Seconded, sir.
I'm sorry, I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Holland, to?
Withdraw the.
Withdraw the approval of the March 14 minute.
You start it.
Do we need to vote on that? Do you get the motion in a second? All in favor? Aye. No? Okay, our next case is case number 2018-10. Public hearing for Robert Parent and Carol Dolan, 12 Roslin Road. The date of the application was May 22, 2018. The case was advertised in the Worcester Telegram Gazette and posted in the town hall and reads as follows. "The Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 13, in the Douglas Municipal Center Community Meeting Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas Maps, to hear the application of Robert Parent and Carol Dolan as requesting a special permit in a rural agricultural zone district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws to vary the required dimensional standards for road frontage, lot area, front yard setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling and garage of property located at 12 Roslin Road, assessor's map 284, parcel 136." You got all the green cards for you?
Yes.
This case, okay, thank you. And?
Mr. Chairman, under, on the application, it's all, this amount is 100 by 100, if you know what I'm saying. Should I mark a 5,000? 50 by 100?
As soon as we open it, we'll answer this question. We had a correspondence from the planning board, which said that they had no objection to the special permit. And, yeah, ready to present?
Yeah, well, I'm.
Okay, you just need to identify yourself for the minutes.
Rich Roslin, based later in design in the center of town here, and I'm the surveyor that was working on this property for them.
Okay.
This originally started as two 50 by 100 foot lots, as you know.
50 by 50 or 50 by 100?
50. 50 by 100. They're two 50-foot lots, wide by 30 feet. And they were combined into one lot, which is going, which is at the registry of deeds right now. It's already gone through as an 81 ex-plant, so property's in common ownership. Basically, this area here was zoned, obviously, well, I mean, these houses were built well before the zoning that is there now in effect. And when we tried to put this actual zoning box in using the present regulations, the house just doesn't fit. So we tried, I'm sure you have a copy of it somewhere, we tried to squeeze the house in as closely as possible to make it, you know, so it just spills over a little in either direction, and try to keep it in the center of the lot. It's not going to, it's not going to meet the zoning regulations, that's why we're here. But quite frankly, even the old camp that was on that lot didn't meet the zoning regulations at the time, the present regulations, so we're not, I hate to say it, making it any better, but we're not making it any worse either, so.
I'm not following that.
Sorry. It was, it was the lot all the way to far side of the first. The new house would be more centered in the lot.
I'm not looking at.
Nothing's circled.
Yeah. I was up there again.
Yes, I was.
I was up there again, and two, two things, Mr. Chairman, right?
Yep, go ahead.
Two things. One, now he has two lots instead of one. He combined the two lots, as we just talked about his last applicant. Secondly, it looks like it is 100 by 100 now.
Yeah.
He's making less, less non-conforming. The setbacks are probably about the same thing that's in the neighborhood, if anyone's gone up there. Some of them are very close to the property line, you can just tell by just looking between the two houses, someone could be no less than, I mean, no more than 10 feet, you know. And I guess what I'm going with the neighborhood, as myself. I'm just giving you what I saw there, okay? So, one, the, now he has two pieces of property, combined into one. Secondly, it's, it's less non-conforming than it was before, so.
Oh, they don't know that.
Before, before, no, the two lots, if you had built a house on each lot, it would've been even less, more non-conforming with today's standards. That's what I'm getting at. There was two lots there, two houses there at one point, I'm sure.
One house there.
One house and one lot, but what I'm saying is now there's two lots. It's still one house, but it's still non-conforming lots.
Yeah. Okay, do we know how, what the lot line is to the existing, the neighboring homes?
I don't see it on here. There is, there is no measurement from the left side of the house to the left side of the lot line, but if, if it's 100 feet and the house is 80, it's gotta be 10 and 10, it's one lot on either side.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the two houses on either side, I think you'll notice they're probably anywhere from 15 to 20 feet from the, from the property line on either side of it. So you're actually got a 30, 35 foot spread, 30, somewhere around there, in between houses, you know, so it's not like you're on top of the other. Quite a few houses close together. Yeah, they took, I haven't.
This is the house. So, this house, yeah. You just answered the question, I think. This house is about 15 feet away, so it'll be about 25 feet in length.
Well, I mean.
Here's some pictures of that neighborhood, if you want to take a look.
Yeah, I've been up there. I mean, I just, if one thinks in general about zoning, there's, there are certain purposes for zoning, and one of them was fire and whatever, and, you know, houses that are close obviously have, have issues, or could have issues, and I.
I'm not sure, as is proposed, how you'd even get a piece of heavy equipment in the backyard without going onto somebody else's property.
Well, the idea is to build it out from the street, you know. In other words, whether we propose to put the well, we'll put the well in first, then we'll put the foundation in, then we'll come in and put the, so we wouldn't be going into anybody else's property at all to put any equipment. And once it's built, they're not gonna be putting anything else in there, so there's no reason. This is also, by the way, I don't know, they had a picture of it, it's a small, single-family home, it's not a multi-story home, it fits well within the neighborhood, so it's.
Anybody on the board have any other questions? Is there anybody in the room that would like to comment on this application?
Pam?
Larry?
So, Larry Lynch, many towns have percentage lot coverage. I mean, Douglas does not. They've taken down a house that had 700 square feet, and they're proposing something with, I think it was 20, 2300 plus the garage, which is another 800. So, you know, the 700 is, is quite a bit less, you know, if they came to me before and wanted to replace it with another 700 square foot house, I would have to issue the, period. And that's where we need guidelines from the planning board, I mean, zoning here, to have a kind of a lot coverage requirement, I think. Just for the reasons Pam said, is, you know, neighborhood, that situation.
I think, personally, I think it's a lot of house with a lot.
I mean, for, for a house that's going into, onto a lot, it's a new home, not an addition to a house, I, you know, I'm really not happy with 10 feet on either side. Just not, not enough.
I agree, I think it's trying to build something too big for, for the amount of land they have. Sir, do you want to speak?
I own a house next to a 16 Rogers Road.
What is his name, sir?
Anyway, he had a survey, and he, I got, took about 10 feet in my trunk, that's what he said, it was probably surveyed the wrong person. But, you know, he got 10 feet, so it didn't beg.
If it was surveyed by, by a professional, that is what it is. I don't think he took anything, it's.
Unfortunately, it's whatever's in the registry of deeds and layout, and I can't do anything about it.
Anybody else that would like to speak on this matter?
I don't know if, I know it was mentioned, it may have, Bob. I don't know if, I know it was mentioned earlier, but I still would like to at least make note of the houses, many of the houses in the area with, that are, that are well in size as the one we're proposing, and are much in, within lesser guidelines that we're asking to the, to the boundary lines. And I mean, as many, as many as these pictures show, they, they are much closer to boundary lines than we're proposing. I just would like to ask that you at least consider viewing a lot of the properties that are in that area.
And actually, the, the distance between those, the houses and any of butters, and even in the back, all of that's gonna exceed at least 25 feet or more between structures. I mean, it's not like, these, some of these pitches are actually closer, which I wouldn't recommend either, but I mean, just.
And, and again, not to be, not to be redundant, but we do have all the butters that are stating that they're okay with, with the exception of partially one, that they're okay with the, with the 10 feet on the, on the sides of the property line.
I think so, if you're looking up there, if they, if you look at the soils in that area, it's, from what I could see, where they dug out, where they have a foundation and everything, where they disturbed it, it's all, looks like it's all kind of gravelly, sandy in that area. I didn't see any clay or anything like that, so if you're worried about coverage and runoff, I don't think you're gonna have a problem with it in that area, based on what I saw for soils on the surface. I didn't do a D test to go digging down there to see what it looked like, but. I know that the, there's a, somebody, another engineer that was looking to put a subject, did a subject design in the front, sure they did a D test.
Yeah, they did.
And it, it, yeah, I'm sure it passed fine, but I don't have those reports, unfortunately.
Mike?
One concern I have is, it'll leave any of the setbacks, all, all sides, they're all.
Well, there was, we could've just slid it one way or the other and just, but we were trying to center it to have the least impact on all the, all the dimensional requirements. It violates all of my no. That was the intention.
You could've gone left or right, you could only gone back six feet, or you have to come forward three feet, those, you'd only get one out of the four.
No. No, it's not gonna be any attempt to, to try to be zoning in any way, it was just, this is what we want, and.
Well, it's maximizing the lot, but.
I think it's more than maximizing, personally, but.
To me, it feels like a, a size house and a design of a house was, was picked out of a, out of a book, and it was set on the lot and tried to squeeze it in, and that's it. And now, now, now we're looking for variances, I just, I think it's too much to ask.
This was the second design, I believe, wasn't this the house with the big overhang roofs?
Correct, yeah.
It had a big, big pitch roof, the roof was on the top, and the roof overhung like 10 feet all the way around. Yeah.
That's all nine.
But that's the second design, it was the first design that showed a big overhang roof. And stuck out in that.
Yeah, that's different. I mean, I'd like to see the house changed. I don't know if they'll lose a room or size in the, in the house, but.
Could go to one car garage and be 15, 15 feet away from each lot.
That'll change, that would change it.
It's just, I personally think it's just too much to ask, but it's just mine. You need four out of five votes to get, to get it approved. Sensing that you're not gonna get four out of five. If you have an option to look for a design that's further away from the, especially the sidelines, or you could have us move forward. In the event it was denied, you can't come back for two years. So, whatever, we'll handle it any way you like. If you'd like to move forward, we can move forward.
If you want to postpone, you postpone.
Continue.
Continue, I'm sorry. Continue and talk to your client about this, you got most of the feelings.
I don't know, the board's here to, to work with people, but I think this is just, you're trying to squeeze too much on a, on the size lot.
Would the acceptance of being 15 feet in from each, would that be acceptable?
It'd be better. You'd have to present it and see, and see, but certainly, it's, it's much better than what's currently being proposed.
So, continue?
We'll continue to our next meeting, or do you need more time?
Okay, next meeting would be superior.
Okay.
Can you be in a meeting?
Would we have the option to postpone, have another, another month if we needed to?
Yeah, we'd also, we have a, we need to ask them for another 30 days for the decision as well, for something for them to say. Okay, so, do you have a motion, John?
Yeah, I have moved, moved until next July 11th at 7:30. Thank you.
We have a second? I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Navarro, seconded by Mr. Holland, to continue the public hearing until July 11th at 7:30. Thank you.
Case number?
Case number, let me see, 201810.
I'm here for you, Mike.
Before we open the public hearing, I don't want to butcher your last name, because how do you?
Tricon?
Tricon?
Tricon.
Con, okay. Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, the next gender item is case number 2018-11, public hearing for David and Barbara Tricon, 122 Franklin Street, the application is May 23rd. And the following notice was in the Worcester Telegram Gazette and posted at the Town Hall and read as follows. The town Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:45 on Wednesday, June 13th, 2018, in the Douglas Municipal Center Community Meeting Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass, to hear the application of David and Barbara Tricon, who are requesting a variance in a rural agricultural RA zone district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, Appendix B, dimensional regulations to vary the required side yard setback of 25 feet to allow the construction of an addition on an existing home by adding a two-car garage and master bedroom on property located at 122 Franklin Street, map 195, posse 38. We receive the certified mailings, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, would, would the acceptance of, of being 15 feet in from each, would that be acceptable?
Oh, yeah.
It would be better.
It'd be better. You'd have to present it and see, and see, but certainly it's, it's much better than what's currently being proposed.
So. Continue? Continue, yeah?
We'll continue to our next meeting, or do you need more time?
Can I, next meeting would be severe.
Okay.
Can you be in a meeting?
Would we have the option to postpone, have another, another month if we needed to?
Okay.
At that time.
Yeah, we'd also, we have a, we need to ask them for another 30 days for the decision as well, for something for them to say. Okay, so, do you have a motion, Joe?
Yeah, I have moved until next July 11th at 7:30. Thank you.
We have a second? I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Navarro, seconded by Mr. Holland, to continue the public hearing until July 11th at 7:30. Thank you. Thank you.
Case number?
Case number, let me see, 201810.
Right, Jake, Minnesota, you know? I'm here for you, Mike.
I'm here for you, Mike.
What's that?
Franklin Street.
Back in?
Yep. Let's see.
Oh, we're in there. Before we open the public hearing, so I don't want to butcher your last name, because how do you?
Tricon?
Tricon?
Tricon.
Con, okay. Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next gender item is case number 2018-11, public hearing for David and Barbara Tricon, 122 Franklin Street. The application is May 23rd. And the following notice was in the Worcester-Fellows Gazette and posted at the town hall and read as follows. The Town Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:45 on the Wednesday, June 13th, 2018, in the Douglas Municipal Center, Community Meeting Room 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. To hear the application of David and Barbara Tricon, who are requesting a variance of a rural agricultural RA zone district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, Appendix B, Dimensional Regulations to vary the required side yard setback of 25 feet to allow the construction of an addition on an existing home by adding a two-car garage and master bedroom on property located at 122 Franklin Street, MAP 195, POSI 38. Do we receive the certified mailings, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a correspondence from the planning board.
I have one.
Yeah.
Sean gave me his.
Tracy signed it.
Planning board said that they have an objection to the attached request for the following reasons, lack of information and completeness, i.e. front setback, farmer's porch, note unprovided, side yard setback of approximately 27 feet. Flow is yours, sir.
All right, as far as the, the 27-foot side setback, it's, on, on this tape survey, it says 33 and a.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus. There's a, a six-foot mudroom, six-foot wide mudroom on, on that side of the, of the house that was put on when we put the second floor on. I have some pictures here, some additional pictures if you guys would like to see them, if, you know, some, some people came and, and looked at it. You can see that mudroom that was put on when we put the second floor on. So with that six feet minus, 33 minus the six was the 27-foot side setback.
And then there's a 43.
Who's there presenting you?
Sorry.
Are you presenting, are you somebody representing you, or are you here on your own?
I'm, I'm here to help Mr. Tricon present. He hasn't been before, any town boys before. He asked me, um, you know, we're involved with soccer and Boy Scouts. So my name's Les Stevens, coming before the board. So what was done here initially was the proposal of the initial footprint of the house in, in a phase plan. So the structure that's currently there was, was the phase one, which is highlighted in yellow in your attachments with the foundation plan. When that was submitted, it was also to, you know, add on the 24-by-24 garage area, which is the orange section being highlighted in the foundation footprint. In your packet here.
Yeah, I, I see it. You mentioned when it was submitted?
Yeah, when, when, when there was a application to go up on the house to add the second level, which, which also included, that was the other phase as well as the, the build out of the garage area.
Oh, okay. So the existing house was built, what year?
In the 1960s.
Okay.
The original.
One-story type variance kind of thing?
One story, yep.
And we went up?
Correct, went up and.
Phase one?
Phase one, yep, phase.
Phase two.
Yep, they were submitted, yeah, at, at the same time when that application went through. So, um, so what is, Mr. Tricon is here to choose to propose, which was the phase two, which is the build out coming out. He still meets a side setback of the 43 feet to be able to maintain his well in a septic area on the side. Because he abuts the town land, which is the Martin Road Park area, he's not able to obtain additional land to increase his side setback, you know, or acquire additional land for a little more area. So. Questions?
Mike? Phase one was the add in the second floor?
Yes.
When was that done?
2006.
2006. So you said that the phase two was also submitted at the same time? Did you submit it to who, the building department?
It was submitted in the building department.
And exactly?
With the plan.
Well, I'm just wondering why you would be here if it was.
Actually, it wasn't. Adele was the, the building inspector back then, and we were aware that we, that we would have needed a variance for that addition.
So did they did the?
When we ripped the roof off, they found mold, they found mold in the walls. So we had to gut, completely gut the whole house and that ate up a ton of our money. So we never, we never went for the variance because we didn't, we weren't going to have the money to, to do the, the addition.
Yeah, I just wanted some clarity on, because it said it was submitted, so I assumed that it might have gone through.
Right, it, it was all submitted at once, but then Adele brought up all, all those, and that's why we never went forward with, with that part of the, and the farmer's porch as well, you know, that, that, that part of it.
Thank you. So we're currently 20.
Yeah, all the side, side setback.
So we're 27 now from the mudroom out?
Yeah, 27 on the side there with the plan, which is where the mudroom bounces out over here. And so it's going to, you know, taking it into account, we do, the addition will come out. So this, this is the six feet where the mudroom is.
Yeah.
It's going to 24 with the garage end.
So then you'd only be three feet off the property line?
Correct.
About 24. Which is, which is the town, town line, town property line.
That is a wooded area. It's Martin, Martin Road Park is right there.
It scoops down.
And it, it does, it.
Yeah, it's. Flat before it scoops in, yeah.
So it's, it doesn't really appear to be buildable or much can be done with it. It's far enough away from the park where you, you can't even, in the, in the, in the winter time, you can see my house with all the foliage gone, but for other, other than that, none, not even any of my neighbors can actually even see that side of my house. None of them are set back that far, or if they are, they're far enough away where they can't even, they can't even see my house at all. So a lot of people don't even know there's a house there. They're just, it's just a dirt road kind of going in.
It appears you had the ability to, to build behind your house and not need a variance at all.
The septic system is directly behind the house.
Yeah.
Okay. Tank is 12 feet off the back, back to the corner of the.
I went to the Board of Health and actually dug that paperwork out.
Okay.
And as well as on the other side, it would be like in the middle of the driveway.
Order three to be able to go around it.
Yeah.
And there's, and there's no other traffic on that road but, but this house.
Yeah.
So it's at the end of the right of way. After the town was defined, I think $400,000 to be able to put the connecting it up, the Martin Road, drive through, you know.
The town was to find what?
$400,000. It was proposed a long ago, $400,000 to, to make the loop. You were on the loop? They proposed, years, years ago.
They put nitro under it.
They proposed the loop. I'm just making sure you're.
I'm awake.
No, she's very numb.
It's a big number. But, but there was a proposal.
It's just like it is another chair.
You're picking on me.
I can, I can, no, I can see where that could possibly happen someday, you know, so.
Yeah.
But it is a right of way.
There's a right of way.
Those, those ideas came from visionaries of the past.
Yeah, you know, I mean, there's a big gully there, too.
If anything's going to happen, it's going to be way beyond us.
Yeah, well, maybe some of us, but some of us are known to be very, very, oh, generous to the town.
So.
And also deaf.
Yeah. So, so, so there was, you know, looking at the options of where else to locate this, you know, on the other side as well as in the back. It's, it's just not feasible to acquire land from, from the town where it, where it abuts. Just doesn't, doesn't work.
Took the right up there.
Yeah. I think Larry, you've been up there?
Yeah. So I, I just want to reiterate that this is a totally unique piece of property. It does have a hardship in not being able to.
To purchase.
Purchase land. There is a need because it's going to be for elderly in-laws that needs to move into a place. And I don't think it's going to be a harm to the zoning bylaws because it is such a unique situation.
Is there anybody else in the room who wants to speak on this case? Board members have any?
I don't have any questions, no.
I have no question.
Have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
The septic tanks on the back left hand corner, where's the leach field?
Behind it.
It goes in the back here, anyway. It's in the back here, so she reaches up in the back here. That's the front. So she's wearing on the back of the house and then she reaches up this way.
Is there any distance to the leach field from the house?
It's on the other side, opposite, other side of the septic coming out this way.
No, 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 I know it would be on the other side, but like from, from the house to the leach field.
Let me say this, the plans that I looked at in the Board of Health.
What's that?
The plans that I looked at, they were in the Board of Health, didn't have any dimensions on it at all.
Okay.
Nothing at all, and it's close. I mean, they were, looked like a magic marker, just square and squares and leach field. I mean, you can't forget how old they are.
Tanks 12 feet from, from the foundation, the tanks 10 feet long, that's 22 feet. So then you get the D box and anything else. But what I'm getting at is you maybe possibly relocate the septic tank and ease that sideline setback and wrap it around the, from the side, around the, the backside of the addition. I know it's not what you have planned, I'm just exploring different options for it because.
Three feet.
Three feet from the property setback, but in the case just before, we, we had a problem with 10 feet. Now we're talking about three feet. That would be my concern, do we explore a possible another option with it to find out, obviously it's too expensive to move the leach field, but it's not that big of a deal to move the tank if you're doing this extensive work.
I think, I think also accessibility, I mean, it's a property still is there from having both side setbacks, but you know, it's still.
Until you want to set up a ladder and that ladder comes out on an angle and you're over in the park.
Well, the park's not that close, it's, it's.
Three feet, three feet's a little tight, that's all.
No, it is.
I can't, I can't follow it from this.
In the application, so is it, you're, you're going to be 33 back, 33 feet back from the front and 27 feet from the side yard setback.
Right, yeah. That's what's proposed or existing?
That's what it's, it's provided.
Provide, oh, so provided, I thought was what, what was existing.
No, provide, no, the existing, no, provided is, is what would remain after you.
I thought one was.
Required.
And what you're providing.
Yeah.
Providing would be after your addition.
Oh, that, that's my fault. I, I messed that up. I, I assumed that was what, what was, what, what you're, what you're supposed to be and then what your current is, is what I, is what I thought.
And that, and that probably why Tracy has 27 feet with a question mark over here.
Yep.
So that advertised that way?
Yeah. No, actually, um.
So the 27 is supposed to be.
It's just to vary the side yard requirement of 25 feet.
Well, if it was 27, then.
I might make a note of that for clarity for the next applicant.
How else we could word that? I would have even seen three feet on a diagram, but, you know, so how, how did everybody know it's three feet?
That's existing, which I would try to propose on the, on your diagram.
That we can refer to in any decision, right? Nobody feels about the three feet.
But I just need to see, see how it.
See where it is.
Does that application need to be corrected?
Must be here.
Sorry?
Does the application need to be corrected?
Well, it doesn't, doesn't, the plot plan they gave us doesn't show, should be something showing the existing and then draw on here the, the addition and what.
Yeah, but the application itself isn't correct.
Yeah, but it wasn't advertised the way it was written.
It's on, it's on the last page here, or in the, in the back section there with the plot plan which is being proposed. Yep. So there's, there's a cross section which is the. Plot plan being proposed.
The, like in the, in the first case tonight, or second case, it tells you exactly what would be left if it was granted.
Yeah.
This doesn't tell you what, what would be left. I mean, it's not wrong because I don't believe, because it says they want to vary the required side yard setback, but it should say from 25 feet to three. But that could be addressed.
That's an error, I guess, needs to check that, right?
Correct. But it didn't have a wrong dimension, it just didn't have one, so I guess. Technically.
I didn't think Larry mentioned three feet.
Is there any possibility you could scale this addition back and get us a little more room?
More side room.
I mean, if it was, technically, you couldn't even put up a ladder on the side of the house to paint it or something. You'd be on somebody else's land if you're three feet away. You had an extension ladder.
It would be on the town land, correct.
Which is.
Right, somebody else's.
Somebody else's land, yeah.
Yep.
This is the places you can stop.
Yeah, that's, so I think the, the sense of the board thing, you know, if, if the mudroom's locked, you know, comes over and you're still maintaining the 24, so nine feet.
Better than, yeah, certainly better than three.
The garage area.
Just a, I'm just, if you put a single door, 16-foot door instead of two 9-foot doors, you could save a couple of feet.
Yeah, it's, this in here, this in here, just push it this way.
Anyway, two 9-foot doors with one and a half in between.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to work with you, but trying to.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
On Barbara Tricon.
Okay, Barbara.
Is there any way to tell how much footage there would be from where Martin Park is to the property line on my side yard? Because it's a large wooded area. So I know we're talking three feet, and like you're saying, to put a ladder up there and having a ladder on, on someone else's property. It's a large wooded area that I, I, I'm just, I want to understand how it would affect anything, I guess.
Just doesn't comply with zoning, zoning bylaws.
Just, okay.
Nothing about being on your next door neighbor's zoning bylaws.
Okay.
And, and the, the general understanding of property rights.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Just a general understanding. Would, you've got, you've got your property and what if somebody wanted to encroach on your property?
Right, no, I'm, I'm just asking.
Or whatever, yeah.
So.
Will redesign?
So I think Dan will be looking for like a motion to continue and look to redesign to see what fits him. Fits on your input.
I think everybody here wants to work, there's just, three feet is, well, I mean, actually, if, you could just barely walk between your property.
Yeah, no, no.
And the, the neighbor's property, even though the neighbor's.
The towns, I know.
But still.
I know, I, I get it.
You never know.
No, no.
Could be a school there in 30 years.
Another one.
Don't say that.
All right, I'll make. Should that application get corrected before the next meeting?
It doesn't say, it didn't add up, it didn't say three feet, it just said nonconforming.
No, it says it's going to be provided.
Yeah, if you could submit a, a plan just showing existing, showing the proposed and then whatever.
The setback.
Setback will be.
Does it need to be an engineered plan?
No, it's a good, good, good call.
Well, if you, if you could, you could submit your own plan. The only thing that I'm going to, I'm saying is if we approve it, 10 feet from the lot line.
Yep.
The building department's going to require you to do a foundation asper. If you're closer than 10.
It could be like that other guy that was just in there and lost 10 feet of it, the neighbor lost 10. His neighbor lost ten feet out of the side yard.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm not realizing it, yeah.
You're assuming that you're in...
An engineer just to shoot, or survey it, shoot the back lot, sideline, whatever. And then you'll know because when you go to provide the building department, I mean, you you won't be able to move forward if it's too close. So if you're kind of doing it with a tape and a...
That makes sense. So you got to do it for the ASB anyways.
And that should probably would save you some money on the ASB where they already had. So we definitely would need a plot plan that shows what's remaining from the proposed addition to the lot line. And then that could be referenced in a decision if that's what... Do you like to continue?
Yeah, I'd like to continue.
Would you see an extension, Maria, also on the deadline? Yeah, please.
Motion to continue case number two zero one eight dash one one to July eleventh.
July eleventh?
Seven forty-five.
Larry?
Are you going to require an engineer plot plan survey?
I don't... We're not going to require it, but he's so close that I would be... We're going to refer to whatever he gives us.
Okay, because I don't think he could probably hire an engineer because they're so busy now before the next meeting. But if he wants two months, we can do two months. Well, all what I'm saying is if it's continue next meeting, then they know that that's...
There's a possibility, yeah.
Providing updated, it's a follow-up continuance.
Okay.
If you can find a corner lot in somewhere and go off of that and do that...
He could always notify...
Then might be one down by Martin Road, Martin Park, because, you know what I mean? They would have surveyed that.
Go ahead, Mike.
He could notify Maria if he finds that it's not going to, he's not going to be ready anyways and she could move it to the follow meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But meanwhile, you've got a motion for it to continue till July eleventh.
At seven forty-five.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mrs. Holmes to continue this public hearing until July eleventh at seven forty-five. Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much.
Moving forward.
Do you want the, I think, all the other tenants?
Yeah, I think we'll do that.
Then I approve for you to check them out, yeah?
Can you read these?
Yeah.
Tell me, will you be quick?
I did. But did you? I'm just a question.
I think I've got these in the mail. I could look at these on my computer.
It's all spunky since he got them. I don't know if they're called spunky.
I'm ready.
Take on the world.
Maria, is there any way you could send these to us in the mail or via email so that we can review these before we come to the meeting?
In the future?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah, I said, well, I sent the March ones, I think, in the mail with your packets.
Okay.
Maybe, I did, maybe I didn't. But I can certainly scan them and email them to you.
Yeah, just scan them? Don't you get them electronic, please?
Yeah, well, I can forward them from Mary.
Yes.
Yeah, you don't have to, yeah, you don't have to scan them.
See, I usually have to scan them because John can't, he can't open a Word document. So I have to do it in a PDF.
I'm old school.
John?
Sorry.
I'm an exception of the rule.
I always have to scan it because it's...
Charge them. You know, you should charge them for your time, please.
Your computer still operate on DOS.
And when I play the video again, I'm still going like this.
I have an IBM computer with twenty megabyte hybrid. You have one of those old ones? I kept them, you know, sentimental reasons.
What does this want?
Help with bills.
Okay.
Have we moved forward at all, Maria? On the bottom of this, it talks about the application for variance needs to be amended. Who does that? First page, bottom. Bottom sentence.
Were you talking about the minutes?
No, yeah, I'm looking at the minutes. At the bottom of page one.
Is this March or April?
Single?
Single.
I'm sorry, it's April, Maria. I beg your pardon. I'm in my home zone, not yours. Well, just the application needs to be changed.
So it's here now?
It's going to happen.
The application gives the option to say you have a financial hardship, which is not grounds for...
Nothing we can consider.
Grounds for a variance for a special permit. So if we just take it off the application?
See if you get the serial numbers. See if it's MIA. Yeah, I would think so.
Single shot.
A single shot, yeah.
We know what it takes, just wipe it out and make new copies.
It's going to happen.
Why not?
Well, it gives the people an option to say I have a financial hardship, but that's not grounds for a variance for a special permit.
No, actually, it doesn't.
It says, asked on the application.
Yeah.
It actually says...
Yeah, well, the hardship really comes in just as a lot size, is it not? I mean, if it was a house...
Topography.
I'll know.
Sorts. But financial is not an option. When I take it with Maria, we figure out how to get it off the application.
Let me see what I can do. I think I can open it up and change it myself.
Yeah, I think you just eliminate it, yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing we got to talk about is Larry, we were talking about expansion of size of a non-conforming lot now. What's the scale that like, actually we use or Whiteinsville or something like that? I'd be interested in seeing something from them, too.
It's under the block coverage?
Yeah.
He made reference to the total square footage of that house, not the footprint. So we would want clarification whether it's the footprint coverage or whole square footage.
Usually the footprint, right.
Correct.
Right, exactly.
Because he said twenty-three hundred plus eight-hundred foot garage. It's only a twenty-four-hundred square foot footprint with that little bump out, it was thirty by eighty. So he's including the second floor and I think that's right in the calculations for lot.
It's the footprint. Okay, that shouldn't be in there. Well, that's something we should, we could discuss, but about, I know some towns have it. Sutton has it and it's very, very restrictive.
It's something to consider.
And a lot of these towns don't have lake lots, which are really... Well, most of our cases seem to be that because the lots are so small.
He's covering more than twenty-five percent of that lot with the house.
Oh, absolutely.
Ten thousand square foot lot and he's over twenty-five hundred square feet total on the footprint, so...
Yeah, but isn't that two floors?
No, 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 you got thirty by eighty, so that's twenty-four hundred. And then the garage bumps around the front, so you just roughly rounded it up to twenty-five hundred.
If they, if you looked at the plans that they put, that, you know, gave us, they could go up and put a little room upstairs. Two rooms upstairs.
Because at the, the original house was only covering less than fifteen percent, seven hundred square feet on a five thousand. Fifteen percent would be seventy-five.
That square foot thing, and they count the driveway, they count this, they count that.
No, there's structures.
Oh, some of them, some of them are non-pervious areas. The driveway counts in some of the towns. In Newton, once that made, they counted the bird bath.
You shouldn't have built it that big.
The guy had a nice bird bath, then he, hey, it would pass if we took it out of here. So what are you going to do?
We were talking about the percentage of lot coverage before you walked in the room. You had mentioned twenty-three hundred square feet plus an eight-hundred square foot garage. No, I know that, but that's total area of the house where it probably should be the footprint of the house for lot coverage, not square footage of the total house.
Oh, right. It was seventeen plus the eight hundred.
Yeah, so it's twenty-five hundred, so it's...
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-five percent of the lot.
I mean, that area itself is fairly sensitive to runoff and whatever.
Because out in Wells, I think there are only ten percent lot coverage.
So we have a motion on the April minutes?
A move that we accept them as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the April minutes. As written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to it here.
Okay, we have a motion.
What's going on? Larry has something to say.
I gave you time.
So on these houses that are kind of overstretching there, you might want to require stormwater management type things, drywells and downspouts that are connected into something just like, it is on a slope.
Intensity from the lot line.
Right, and so...
Get it to butt wall and like, you know.
And there is quite a flow of water down.
Gosh. The road disappears.
It would be hard to get a pitch and swell next to your house for ten feet.
Right. I mean, if you're...
It could be done, but...
If you're twenty-five feet away, it may not make it to your neighbor's lot. But when you're ten feet away, there's no way to, other than putting it into the ground.
Yeah, but a lot of people ask for that stormwater management now. A lot of people ask for that, you know, a lot of towns.
Yeah, a lot of towns are requiring it. A lot of towns are requiring it.
Should we, well, actually, we can't do that, just like we had the requirement to, for Larry to bring that up to...
No, we can condition it.
I just, I guess what I'm saying is when any applicant comes in with that situation, should you mention it, you should be doing this with this, you know, storm.
Well, we would have to make a pot about bylaw, correct?
Well, I don't think, no, we can condition it. We could say...
On an individual job.
If the topography is sensitive topography, we certainly can look at it and say, and because of this, we want this.
And because what you're doing there is just preventing a problem that'll come back to bite.
Even that paved driveway, if that's pitch going towards the neighbor's yard, is only ten feet away.
Right, good luck.
Which...
Usually they have, usually they have the gutters and everything running to it. You know, they put a cement thing in the ground and they hook up to it.
Even driveways can't be close to driveways in the average.
But we can... We could condition anything that we feel...
Correct, but he was suggesting that we look at the percentage of block coverage.
Oh, yeah.
That is separate, actually. I mean, we can, we can address this one only because of topography there.
What I'm suggesting is Larry pick it up right away when he sees the application and says you're going to need some drainage here before they come to us so we don't send them on the merry way, come back again the next month.
Well, Larry, do I try, right?
Yeah, pretty much.
He's a zoning officer.
He's a zoning officer, so if we make the zoning...
There you go, sharpen your pencils.
He's the first one to pick up on it, that's what I'm saying. It'd be easy for him to say it. And we could just, I don't want to use the word demand it, but say this is what we'd like.
It's a condition.
Yeah, so, okay. I made my point.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to adjourn.
I seconded already.
So I seconded.
Before Larry jumped in.
We already said aye.